I would like to call on the regular meeting of the Planning Commission in order. Today is September 20, 2023, and the time is 6:31. Planning Commission Clerk, would you please call, roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Power.
Here.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Here.
And Chair Bowie.
Here.
All Commissioners are present. You have a quorum.
Now we will do the flag salute. I would like to ask Casey Wolpert, head of us, to lead the flag salute.
You may begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we go to item number three, report from Planning Secretary regarding the late communication. Planning Secretary, are there any late communication?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Chair Bowie, there is one item arrived today. It is related to item 8.1 on tonight's agenda.
Now we go to expati communication. Item four, expati communication. This section is allow all officials the opportunity to review any disclosure regarding the site visits or expati communication about the public hearing and regular business items. Are there any expati communication to report?
Yes, Chair Bowie. I did visit the property in question for item 8.1, the conditional use permit.
Yes.
And I also spoke with staff regarding this matter.
So, item five. Now, special presentation? Are there any?
There are no special presentations this evening.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move to our oral communication. Item six. Planning Commission Clerk, please read the procedure into the record.
Certainly. This is the time of the meeting that the members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing items should do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided to the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium. At that time, state your name and city of residence for the record, which is optional. Chair Bowie, I currently have no speaker cards for oral communications. However, we do have people in the audience if we'd like to request if anybody would like to speak.
Yes.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak during oral communications? I see none, Chair Bowie.
Yes, I see.
So if there are any requests to speak during the oral communication?
There are none, Chair Bowie.
All right. If there is no further public comments, I will now close the oral communications and move to the next item. This is the item number seven, approval of the minutes of September 6, 2023.
I'd move to approve.
A second.
So Planning Commission Clerk, roll call please.
A roll call vote. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power. Commissioner Wolpert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0.
Now we go to item number eight, public hearings. Planning Commission Clerk, please read the procedure into the record.
Certainly. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. That is optional. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With the exception of the applicant or the designee, all attendees may speak only once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions. At this time, Chair Bowie, I have two speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. At this time, I believe you refer to the Planning Manager.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Short timer's disease.
To the Planning Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. At this time, I'll turn it over to Sandy Kim, who has a presentation for us tonight.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This is a presentation for planning case number 2022-0278. The request entitled involves a conditional use permit and development review at property located in the city of Westminster and only identified by an assessor's parcel number The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a new wireless facility per Westminster Land use code and a development review to construct a new wireless facility. The project site is located within the existing Southern California Edison Right-Away, and it is located just north of Heil Avenue and in between Newland and the I-45 freeway, as shown in the aerial map with the yellow star marking the location of the transmission towers. Going forward, I will refer the project site as just the Eastman or Edison Eastman. The project parcel is currently occupied by Plant Nursery Business and 236-foot-tall transmission towers. And the applicant is proposing to establish a new unmanned wireless antenna communication facility on Easternmost Transmission Tower. Going forward, the proposed project will be referred as Wireless Facility. The subject site is zoned public facility, and it is surrounded by R1 single-family residential zones and the freeway. This slide provides the aerial view of the subject parcel and the existing condition of the Edison Eastman, and the yellow star identifies the subject transmission tower which will be used to mount the new antennas onto those transmissions. The project site plans identifies the subject transmission tower, antennas, equipment enclosures, and underground conduits. The transmission tower is 136 feet, as indicated, in height, and the proposed antennas will be mounted approximately 65 feet above the ground. The proposed equipment enclosure is located under the transmission tower. The proposed equipment enclosure is about 140 square feet or 14 by 10 feet to be placed on a new concrete pad. The equipment closure will be constructed of Lovers Slat aluminum panel system in green color, as you could see on the slide. For the proposed perimeter screening, the applicant is proposing two perimeter fencing options. Option one proposes the use of chain link fence with green vinyl slats, and option two proposes the use of black vinyl coated chain link fence, as you could see. This option one proposes the use of eight-foot-high chain link fence with curved top and green vinyl slats, as shown in the details in the little box above the proposed photo simulation. This is the view from the Heil Avenue on the west side of the transmission tower. And this is the view from Heil again, but on the east side of the transmission tower, and only the antennas on the towers are visible. The equipment box is not visible, and there is a perimeter screening chain link fence with slats. This is a view from Rose Circle, which is a small, little cul-de-sac street, and only the antennas will be visible from the residential areas. Option two proposes the use of eight-foot-high black vinyl coated chain link fence with curved top, as the curved top is required by the Edison. This is a view from Heil Avenue on the west side of the transmission tower again. Again, this option two proposes the use of the black coated vinyl coated fence, and this is a view from Heil on the west, I'm sorry, east side of the transmission tower. This is the view from Rose Circle again, small cul-de-sac, and only the antennas will be visible again, and none of the other equipments will be visible. As an alternative, staff did discuss and recommend to the applicants the recommended perimeter fencing types, as shown on this slide. However, the applicant has indicated that the recommended fences will not work for the project, nor that Edison will authorize to construct such fence types. The applicant is in attendance at tonight's meeting and can provide additional details of the perimeter fence types. The staff determined that the proposed use is permitted use with approval of a conditional use permit per Wireless Communication Facility Code. The proposed wireless equipment will be contained within an enclosure in place under the transmission tower, except for the antennas that are mounted on the transmission tower. Therefore, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the planning case number 2022-0278, subject to conditions of approval. And this concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions. Additionally, as indicated, applicant is here to answer any technical and detailed questions or comments on the project.
Thank you for your presentation. Do any other Commissioner have any question for the staff at this time?
Would you mind posting, putting up a photo that focuses on the base of the towers that would be screened out if we were to choose the fence with the green vinyl covering?
Is, can we see the screen? Is...
Is there anything a little, that focuses a little closer? If not...
This one?
Yeah, that's good, thank you. I don't really have a question, I just wanted to just to see it.
I have questions? Can you show the aerial view of antenna, please?
This is an existing site condition. Would you like me to do the, my animated detail? Would this be?
Yes, the other one.
The other one?
Yeah, previous one, yes. Is this the only one in, within the city of Westminster, or we have any?
Are you referring to, is this the only wireless facility in Westminster?
Yes.
No, this is number of many wireless facility sites.
Okay.
I have a question. So this is a different company and a different structure than most other wireless carriers? Wireless being generally cellphone communication, like AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon? This is from Dish Network. That's correct. They're going to be the owners and operators of this. Is it different in frequency, or any concerns that it's different than cellular?
I believe it's similar to other wireless carriers. This will be owned and operated by Dish Wireless.
And is it to communicate with mobile devices, or to communicate...
It is, it is a wireless phone, cell phones.
So cell phones. So Dish Network cellphone provider, not residential internet or something like that? Or are they, are they planning on using it to beam internet or infrastructure into residencies and businesses?
That is a good question. I'm not aware of that. I believe these specific antennas are for cellphone receptions.
Thank you.
It may be a good question for the applicant during the public hearing.
Do we have any more questions from the staff, to the staff? Okay. Well... Well, so at this time, I would like to open the public hearing and ask the planning commissioner clerk to call on anyone wishing to speak on this time.
Thank you, Chair Bowie. I have a couple of request-to-speak cards at present. The first speaker will be Brian Delory, from the applicant's side.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Brian Delory. I am from Butler Telecom. We've been contracted by Dish Wireless to help them with this entitlement process in order to get a facility built in the city of Westminster. Currently, this is the second wireless facility that we've brought to the commission for approval, the second also Edison Tower. Last year, previously, we had gotten any approval for another facility, and so in regards to your question prior, if, Chair, that if this is the only facility, in fact, this is just one of two proposed for now, and then in the future, there might be more. The city has a number of other ones around the city on Edison properties with other carriers. In regards to this facility, so Dish Wireless is a new player in the game. Back in 2019, 2018, with the T-Mobile buying Sprint Wireless, the FCC required that a new player join in order to break it up to, prevent any oligarchy. So there is now a fourth carrier, which is Dish Wireless, which is planning to expand services throughout the United States. I'm more focused on Southern California with Orange County and LA County. In regards to this facility, this facility will assist us in providing a cell network in the area, so that any personal cellphone carriers who are personal cellphone customers of Dish can have coverage in this area. A little bit of a technical background, when you have a cellphone, it only works with a specific tower. So if you have T-Mobile, Verizon, or Dish, it has to communicate with a very specific tower that is owned by that company. They cannot jump towers, they cannot utilize an existing tower that's already in play. So since Dish Wireless is a new carrier with its own licensed frequency by the FCC, they need to create a network, and this is one project that is creating that network. In regards to the design that we have proposed, Edison requires that we do not screen their facility, the facility, due to standards set by the California Public Utility Commission. They set the standard for Edison, so they can go ahead and tell us what we can and cannot build. That is why the antennas themselves are not screened. However, with our work with Southern California Edison, we have worked with them to ensure that at least the ground facility is screened per our discussions with staff, and to ensure that the, it is not unsightly for those that are walking by. It was brought to our attention by staff that the fence along the perimeter, little wear and tear from over the years, and has asked us to contribute a little bit extra than we normally do in our scope, which is to update that fence line. And so we have proposed two variations, one with the slats, which will block 100% of the view, and then the other one would just be a vinyl-covered chain link fence, black. Very similar to the one that's utilized over the 405 freeway, which is one of the ver, versions that the city brought us to our attention, that can we have this version instead? And we told them, well, that will be more than our budget for construction for the whole area. So the fence that they propose is way outside of our budget, way outside of our scope in terms of what we can provide. However, with our discussion with my client and with the staff, we have found this middle ground of chain link fence, one, two options being the slats or the vinyl. I also am here, if you have any questions, in regards to the application itself, in regards to the technical that you had, Commissioner, I would reserve that question for my, my client's rep, which is Norm, who's here, who's probably well more versed into that side of the, of the business model. In regards to the conditions of approval, earlier today, we submitted a letter from Edison stating that condition number four, which is requesting that we landscape the area should the nursery cease to exist. We provided a letter from Edison stating that they will not allow permanent landscaping in the area. They issued this letter on our previous proposal, and they issued it again for this one. In regards to whether the nursery will stay or go, that is between the nursery and Edison, has nothing to do with Dish Wireless, nor with my application. So in regards to that, we would like condition number four stricken from the conditions, seen as that the landlord will not allow us, and they are utilizing California Public Utility Commission Order 95, which allows them to set those standards, which is the same standard that was created for our design in terms of the antenna placement, the screening, and everything else that is proposed. Everything that we have proposed is in compliance with Order 95 of the Plan Com, or Public Utility Commission, and so therefore, we ask that we just continue this, and to allow that to kind of fall by the wayside. Other than that, we do not have any more comments in terms of the conditions proposed by staff, and we ask for an approval of this application.
Chair Bowie, I have some questions for Mr. Delory, if I may?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna, kind of go back in time a bit. You may recall, I recall you, you may recall me, I was here in August of last year when you came for your Monroe project, to put antennas on the Monroe site, and all the other commissioners are new, so this is going to be some, just a little bit of background information for the commissioners. And I recall at that meeting, there was lengthy discussion on the structure that would go around the equipment, and at that time, the planning commission was told that there could be no permanent type of any construction around the equipment, and it turns out that there is now a block wall around that equipment, so I thought that was an interesting change of position. Also, you may recall, there was a condition that a wrought iron, black wrought iron fence be installed, and you were here, and Edison was here, when the commission approved that condition. And I was out at the site today, and it's the same ugly, rusted chain link fence that was there a year ago. So I'm asking you, are the antennas up?
In regards to the CMU, are, to the first point, are you referring to the ground enclosure underneath the tower?
That's the first point, the enclosure under the tower. The second point is the fence, and the third point is, are the tower, the antennas up?
Yes, I want to address all three points, but, so the first one was the...
Go ahead.
You are asking that, I stated that no enclosure can be placed underneath the tower.
No, no permanent. There was this discussion, and several people spoke, there was you, and there was the gentleman from Edison spoke on the, and there was no permanent type of enclosure, so as, and I even suggested, and it's in the motion, that you get with staff and work out something, and that's fine, and what's the, what's there is fine. What puzzles me is, is that it was stated there could be nothing permanent, now we have a block wall enclosure.
The block wall enclosure is within the footprint of the, of the tower, correct?
Understand, that's correct.
So, yes, the, Edison does allow a permanent enclosure underneath the tower. What was discussed at that meeting and with staff was that they wanted a perimeter around the tower. I believe the same letter that we provided today actually states that a 25-foot setback been needing around the tower at all times. And so the CMU block wall that was brought up during the commission, we said that we couldn't provide that, because Edison says that no perimeter fence. However, we were able to get a CMU enclosure underneath, and that is allowed by Edison. And so we did use a CMU standard last time. This time, with discussion with staff, we brought a slatted aluminum green, so that way it's not so monstrous looking. In regards to point two, that one was in regards to the chain link fence being replaced with a wrought iron, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that one, we have been in discussion with Edison to allow us to install that wrought iron fence. There's a lot of going back and forth. We are, we have already gone through the process of informing them that that wrought iron fence was approved at that time for that project. We're trying to hold them to that. It's just proving to be a longer instance. We are still committed to installing the wrought iron fence on that project, unless Edison gives us such a pushback that we would actually have to come back to tell you that it wasn't able to. But at this moment, I have not been told that we are not installing that wrought iron fence on that property. I've only just been told that Edison has had many questions in regards to the scope in which, why we are doing it, and it, it's, there's multiple layers of, of superiors kind of coming back and forth with us to make sure that it was approved by the right people, and that it can move forward without any hiccups in the near future. And then point three was...
Excuse me, before you go on, so my point to you, or I guess my, my question to you is, when you knew there was going to be some delay in this, why didn't you notify our staff of this delay in the fence and go ahead with the antennas?
We're still building, so we haven't closed out. The permit has still, is still...
Understand, but the antennas are, the antennas are up.
Correct.
Antennas are up, and you're having a problem, or you're having discussions with Edison, so it would have been nice, the courteous thing to do, to contact staff and say, "Staff, we're going to go ahead with the antennas, we're still working on this fence, so now what happens if Edison comes back and says, 'Nope, we're not going to do it,' and you've got your antennas up, and you say, 'Well, our hands are tied,' where do we go from there?" And, and then we have this, this application before us this evening, is the city going to be treated in the same manner?
In regards to that comment, Commissioner, the permit hasn't been active that long that we can really say that we've been dragging our feet as it's being kind of conveyed. It's still active, the, we're still actively working on that project, we're still actively engaging with Edison. We haven't given up on that project. I'm just stating that it is taking longer than we anticipated. Now, in regards to why the antennas went up now, we are on a schedule back, set by Edison. So if we're gonna go back to that project, so once that project was approved by the planning commission, I went to building. So as I stated in my presentation, Order 95 of the California Public Utility Commission requires that Edison be the engineering entity that approves all mounting and scheduling, and also the, to ensure that we are not impacting their services. When we got that permit to start construction, Edison gave us a schedule to say, "We want you mounted by a certain time period." We told them we still have these other conditions, which is the under, the base construction of the, of the enclosure, and also the fence. And they told us, well, they required that we continue with the project, did the fence mounting, have it approved by their engineers, and to ensure that there's no, there's no effect to them or their business model. Now, like I said, we're still actively engaging with Edison on this project, we're still having closed out the project, it hasn't been finalized, it hasn't been completed. The inspector has the permits to show that we are proposing a wrought iron fence, and it is part of our proposal. Now, if an issue were to come up, and Edison does come back and keeps fighting us, yes, I would come back to the staff, and I would tell them what the issue is. But we haven't gotten there yet, because this hasn't drawn, been drawn out long enough for me to kind of say, "Well, they're not moving." There has been movement, it's just, it's slow, because it is Edison, but they did require us to start the construction already, because they have their own timeline, and they have their own engineers that are already backlog with other projects that they need to do, and so we were at their whim. In regards to what will happen on this project, I can't tell you if it will be the same, or if it will be easier. I do know that when I told Edison that we will be proposing chain link fence, I didn't get pushback like when you requested back in 2022, the wrought iron fence. When I proposed a chain link fence to replace the chain link fence that is in existence now, Edison did not give me pushback, they only said, "Make sure that top part is curved." That was the only comment I received from Edison when it came to this project in regards to the scope that we are provo, providing today.
Okay, well, and just in, I'll finalize my comments, and the other commissioners have, sure have some questions. But again, I think it would have been the professional thing to do on your part, and I hope you would do it in the future, depending on how this application goes, that if there are some delays, if the antennas go up before all the conditions are completed, that you would contact staff and just keep them advised. Thank you.
Okay. I have a comment with, I have a question to...
You, please.
Don, at the time you approved, you approved the project last August, was the time limit...
Pardon?
Was any, any time limit was put on for that fence to be on, installed?
I don't recall the specific conditions that they were there, that's something that staff could probably address, condition timing, and how that's normally handled.
I'm gonna ask him the question.
Hmm.
There was any, any time limit for you to install the fence or not?
Let me, I have the conditions right here. Okay, so it was a replacement of condition four for the previous one. The proper screening shall be retained around the perimeter of the site, the existing plant fencing along Jefferson shall be maintained at all times. Existing chain link fence on the west side of the subject lined along Monroe Street will be replaced with black wrought iron fans at a minimum six-foot height. The fence will be finished with a powder coating required to be maintained and refurbished as needed. The design of the wrought iron fence shall be subject to the review and approval of the Community Development Director. On, sorry about this, this packet is humongous. All right. No, not that one. Maybe it's on the back of this guy. Hmm. I had the letter, but I don't have it right now. Yes, I do not actually have the approval letter from the community director, but we did reach an agreement on the design, and, and everything was approved afterwards.
You don't have any recall of time limit?
There was no time limit ever discussed, it was only about the design and the height that we were concerned about.
I have a question regarding the radio frequency electromagnetic energy and radiation. Do you have a study officially about the radiation effect to the people surrounding the station?
Oh, so per the FCC, that is under their purview. They... They give us the guidelines in terms of radiation exposure and in regards to who, in regards to the levels and placement and, and such. In regards to radiation and any exposure, we have already addressed that with our radio frequency electromagnetic energy judicial report, which is attachment number four in your report, which states, well, actually, yeah, I can probably go straight to the page. If the chair would go, can see this, and this is going to be page. Ooh, these do not have page numbers. My apologies for that.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, oh, actually, this will probably be a better representation. If chair can see this, if not, I can also just pass it to you. This graph shows that the level of exposure is up in the air. It's at the 65 foot mark. There is a tapering around there similar to like a flame. Those that are around that area would be exposed to a higher than allowed by the FCC. The rest of it, that's white, per our report, is within FCC limits. Our frequency is monitored, or I'm sorry, is licensed by the FCC. So they give us that license to utilize that frequency as long as we do not have our antennas at level where there's going to be the general public where they're going to be exposed to it. You would have to be at that same level of the antenna to get any exposure. Other than that, there is no exposure to anybody in the surrounding areas. The FCC has conducted studies and has found that there are no conclusive evidence of exposure of those who are outside of the beam of the antenna itself. It's just static, normal static that everybody experiences from radiation from the sun and other objects, which is not harmful.
So did we have a chance to inform on the residents around this area?
Yes, that is correct. The city's, city municipal code requires notification for all property owners and tenants within 500 feet of the subject site. And Sandy can confirm the date that the public notices were sent out. We, we received a few return notices so that we, we are absolutely positive those notices were sent out. They were also posted as prescribed by municipal code in the civic center and also on the city's website.
So do we have any rebuttal on this?
Chair Bowie, before we're done, if we're done with the speaker, we do have another speaker card at present and plus there's other people in the audience, but I believe Commissioner Walbert may have a question?
Just a question. So as Commissioner Anderson pointed out, your cell towers are up on the Monroe project. How long have they been in operation?
As far as I know, they're not in operation.
So they're still not in operation?
As far as I know.
Okay, so client base, zero clients for you guys at this point in the city of Westminster? And you're just trying to branch the, the coverage area? Is that the, the purpose of this particular tower that's in front of us now?
We're creating a network from scratch. So in order for a network to work, it needs multiple nodes. This would just be one of the many nodes that needs to be installed in Westminster in order for there to be substantial coverage. In fact, I would point your attention to attachment seven of your report. Attachment seven is called a zoning propagation map. This shows the level of individual contribution of that cell site to potential clients on the individual site. And then on the last page, it shows how it would work in conjunction with future proposed sites, including the one on Monroe. In regards to when it would go live, that all depends on how many more I can get approved. Let me rephrase that. How many more dish can get approved because I'm not their only contractor? They have different contractors in different areas. We'll focus on different specific things. I just happen to be the one who does CUPs.
Will there be any more questions of this speaker?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Delary. I will call the next speaker as Mr. Delary cleans up his pile.
Would you please?
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Norman McLeod.
Good evening, Chair and Council or Commission. Norm McLeod, zoning manager for Dish Wireless. Brian gave a pretty good explanation of, you know, the scale and scope of our installation, the justification for the site location. In reference to the propagation maps, you see the facilities within ANSI guidelines well below the standards available, or I should say for exposure levels to human, you know, exposure. It's, you know, Dish Wireless is the newest provider of wireless coverage to the community and to the nation. And with that advent of another carrier comes the price reductions and availability, availability to, you know, higher level of population. Competition is, you know, obviously the, the needed element to keep pricing down. So Dish Wireless is known as the disruptor in that, in that category. So with the new cell phones coming out, you'll see Dish Wireless marketed probably as Boost Infinite. And, you know, hopefully you'll see your, your prices obviously. We want you to become a Dish Wireless, you know, customer, of course. This is one of several sites in the region that we're looking to deploy to, to offer broadband services to the community. And in that effort, we work with staff and got to know Sandy and Steve very well over the last six to nine months. We meet with them on a on and off basis, keeping ourselves in a collaborative mode, working with the jurisdictions to come to a design that's pivotal to both the city and to Dish Wireless. It takes into consideration the aesthetics of the ground mounted equipment. And Commissioner Anderson, to your question about the structure itself below the tower, within the footprint of the tower, that is a upgrade in terms of the scale and scope of that installation to shield our equipment from any visual, you know, impacts of the surrounding community. So we've offered up a aluminum sided, green painted slatted structure in lieu of a typical CMU wall, if you will. There may be a CMU or block wall at other locations, but I think the, the chain fence was replaced with a wrought iron fence. And to answer your question about that, I believe that facility has yet to receive a final approval and power release by the city. The city will notify Edison that all the infrastructure is in place so that a formal power energizing of that facility can be accomplished. And that has not occurred yet. So we're looking for the channels of communication and it's a, it's a big organization working with Sprint, excuse me, with SCE. They're quite bureaucratic and they pretty much drive, as Brian was alluding to, the pace of which we build and deploy our sites. They are some of, somewhat of a big elephant, so to speak, make them move, a big ship to turn. So they pretty much give us a cadence in our build and deployment schedule. So we work with them constantly. And if we feel like we've left staff out of the loop, that's on Dish's responsibility to do so. We'll definitely work with, is that my three minutes are up already?
The three minutes are up, but the commission has the right to extend time if the majority wishes to extend time.
Yes, I would like to hear.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. We have consensus to continue.
Continue, very good. So yes, definitely want to keep staff abreast of where we are in our build. We would request a final inspection and a request for power release from the city to SCE. So there's still a lot of communication that goes there. Physically, it may look like it's up and operational, but it's not. And so we would definitely make sure that we cannot receive a final power release notification by the city to the juris, to SCE until we receive our final inspections to make sure that building, that installation is complete. And I believe the wrought iron fence is part of that permit. So in answering your question regarding durations, it's a long process. You know, we're, go ahead if you have a question.
Mainly the fence is very important, so children will not go in or homeless people.
I'm sorry, no?
The fence is very important for a simple reason.
Oh, yes.
You don't want children to go inside.
Absolutely.
Also, you don't want a lot of homeless around going inside.
Absolutely, and we are experiencing.
You don't want no one climb up that.
No, we don't want that at all. SCE doesn't want, they've got kind of a jagged edge steel on their, their legs, so nobody can climb the towers.
The stronger the fence, the better.
Absolutely, absolutely. So somewhat of a double duty scenario here with the perimeter fencing along Hyle, as well as our enclosure around our equipment. We don't want, that's expensive equipment and we've had theft. There's copper in there, so there's obviously someone wants to go in there and pull the copper out of it. So we do have a lid as well on that structure and that, that box that encases our equipment cabinet. So really, we want, we don't want anybody disturbing our equipment.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anybody else?
Do we have any question to read?
I see a future Dish customer right here. He's talking about multiple carriers and the competition is important.
You're planning on being all over the US or just California?
It's the US, it's nationwide. It's a nationwide deployment. So in 2020, the DOJ deemed this a carrier with the merger of Sprint and T-Mobile. So there were only three carriers at that time, three years ago. I came on in 2020 and since that time, I've reached out to about 180 different jurisdictions throughout Southern California, Central California. And the challenges are upon us now to deploy and build and make sure we're in keeping with all conditions of approval as we go through the process. So it's, it's a huge task. We met our 70% coverage for the country back on June 14th, but that was the country. Southern California is a unique cat in and of itself, so we have a lot of challenges, a lot of regulatory issues to deal with and more scrutinizing jurisdictions. So I appreciate your scrutiny and making us look good and making sure we give coverage to the community at the same time.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Bowie, that is the last speaker card I have for the public hearing. Would you like me to invite any for the audience to speak as well?
Please do it.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Chair Bowie, I see no one, no one else having interest.
Okay. So we do not have any rebuttal?
No need for rebuttal, that's correct.
So our commissioner, do you have any additional questions on this staff or the members of the public? If none, then we will close the public hearing.
And Chair Bowie, after closing the public hearing, this would be the time for any deliberation or comments amongst the commission?
Okay. So if we don't, then we would time for deliberation now?
Certainly, yes.
Is there a motion on the item eight point one?
Oh, Chair Bowie, I'd like to make some comments before we get to a motion, if that's okay?
Yes, would you please?
Okay, thank you. I want to start by saying I was very pleased with the presentation materials that were submitted by Mr. Delary. It was very complete and it had some excellent pictures and showing the before and after of what was proposed, what's there now. That was very helpful. So, and I also think that the proposal for the screening around the equipment is much more attractive than the block wall. I was glad to see that. The color and the texture of that, I think are, I think that's all positive. So I think overall, I think the proposal is reasonable. And I think what we heard from the representative from Dish, that staff will be kept in the loop as to progress on sites and just so we don't run into the same situation again that we had in this, in the Monroe case. I do, just some thoughts on the, a couple of thoughts on the fence and back to that. That's one of my key concerns. And that is that if you have a chain link fence, a chain link fence consists of steel posts, two to three inches, maybe three to four inches in diameter and chain link steel fencing. If you have a wrought iron fence, you have steel posts and you have steel wrought iron panels. And if you have the vinyl fence, you have the same thing. So no matter what you have up there, you have steel posts embedded in concrete. And if Edison ever needed to remove any of those structures, they could easily do so and quickly. This property has a large gate, so that's probably never going to have to be a concern. So I think it gets down to, you know, in some cases, a financial issue. But when you have a corporation that wants to go nationwide with our cellular, I would look to them to set the bar and the standard that when they come into a community, they don't say, we have to go cheap because our budget won't allow us to put in a decent looking project. I've lived in the city for 50 years. I worked for the city Westminster for 37 years. And one of my goals as a, an employee of the city was to always try and ensure that when projects come in, it would leave the city a better place than before that project arrived. And so in, in my opinion, the wrought iron fence is a very attractive and secure way of dealing with the issue. And it may cost a little more, but if, again, you have a billion dollar, multi-billion dollar corporation backing this up and when they come into a community, my feeling is, in the case of Westminster, they need to do what they can to give us a quality project. So, and, and I would like to, at this time, I'd like to ask Sandy to, if you could show us the, the picture. I went out this morning and took a picture. There is a fence on Newland near Starview, near Starview School across from Russell Parish Park. This is an Edison tower and where they installed antennas. And the planning commission required a wrought iron fence at that location. So if we can get the picture up there. So this is what the fence.
So I wanted to just show the general area
Thank you.
of the, the location that Don is referring to. And then the next slide would show the existing wrought iron fence.
So it's my feeling that this, this represents a, a quality appearance. And as in, this also brings up the point, the question of the landscaping. I'm not concerned in this case about landscaping being, I think, adjacent. I think there was some comment or some concern that there would be landscaping somewhere on the property. Well, keeping in mind that the proposed site, all three sites, this site, the Monroe site and the site that we're considering this evening on Hyle, they're all plant nurseries. And as you can see, what they do, what the plant nurseries do, they put some landscaping in pots along the fence. It doesn't interfere with what Edison's trying to accomplish, keeping the, the area clear. And it does provide some screening. So my feeling is that the wrought iron presents a really quality image. We're trying to improve our community and this is an opportunity to do so. Thank you. And, and along that line, I would, I would suggest that we amend, not at this time, but when we get ready to make a motion, that we amend the condition that would require a wrought iron fence in lieu of the proposal of the applicant.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Anderson. And I would like to open it for deliberation if we have to adjust the condition in rebuttal.
I strongly agree with Don with the wrought iron fence.
Okay.
It's a must have. As he, as he spoke about it, billion dollar companies can cheap out on a little fence. It's unacceptable.
So now.
Can I ask a question of Don, Commissioner Anderson? Have we been consistent in requiring that in the projects that you've seen of this nature? It's requiring wrought iron, so this, it would be consistent with past practice?
Yes, it started with, with the project on Newland. Now that was, other, other projects have come in and I don't, I don't know that, when I was on the commission that we had any, but I know starting with that one, with that project on Newland, that's where, where I started my, my thoughts or wanted to share my thoughts regarding this. And so we've had that project and then this is the, the project on Monroe, which was August of last year. So since the project on Newland, I don't believe we've had any that, I don't think we've had any projects come in at this, in a similar situation. So as far as I know, this is, this is consistent.
Well, and along, along those beautification lines too. I mean, if you look at the pictures where the parkway is, you have a couple of feet of grass out there that clearly hasn't been maintained by Edison or anybody else for who knows how long. So you have dead grass in front of a beautiful fence. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily look fantastic. You can see from any number one of the pictures, you have the homeowner in the blue house, you know, on any one of the, we looked at, all nice green grass because they're probably paying for the water. And then you get to the Edison property with that parkway in front of it and it's just, you know, it's a desert, so.
Well, and that's, and, you know, keep, keep in mind too that it's my understanding that parkways are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. And we see this in residential areas too, where we have what some, what I call parkway abandonment. People figure they have to maintain their front yard or the front of their property, but the. but the parkway is left to not be maintained. So we could certainly put a condition in that Edison adopt a maintenance program, though they could do this with their, with the person leasing the property. They could require that the person leasing the property maintain the parkway. That would certainly be, that's a good.
A member of the public would like to speak?
Planning Commissioner Clerk, there is some resident would like to speak.
Chair Bowie, you've already closed the public hearing, so if you wish to have anyone speak, you would have to open the public hearing again, correct? City Attorney?
Yes.
That's correct. You did close the public hearing, so it's up to you if you want to reopen it.
Yes, I would like to open it.
They did have an opportunity to speak, but nobody, nobody came up when it addressed.
So procedurally, you just open the public hearing again, allowing anyone else to provide testimony, and then after that, providing whatever testimony, then the applicant would now have a rebuttal period. So just state, I believe you did state, but just for the record, if you could say that you're opening the public hearing again?
Yes, I would like to open the opening for the public to contribute their input. I would like to ask the people, the upper members, to approve it.
Chair Bowie, you have that right as the chair to open the public hearing again.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, perfect. And the members of the public that wish to speak, please come up. Just state your name for the record. Oh, up at the mat, yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Zeno Pepper, and I live on Ross Circle, which is a street that joins, it's right on the east side of the power lines. The problem is, and Commissioner Walbert mentioned that about that dirt area, it's all, and we have so much problems there, somebody always comes, because it's so ugly, they always come and dump wrought iron. I don't know who it is, but somebody has a wrought iron business, and they just dump wrought iron there probably at least once or twice a month. And it's just these big pieces of wrought iron that were used, and they still have the contaminant of the concrete and all on it. So we have that problem. So what you were addressing would be perfect, because they used to be, the owners or the leases of the property, they used to take care of it, and there was nice plants in there, there was nice, there was always flowers, there were, it always looked nice. But at this point, it's gone to what you saw, you know, the pictures that you have where it's all dirt. And the other problem that we have is we're right on that border of Westminster and Huntington Beach. So we have a problem, there's always somebody coming and dumping furniture or whatever on the Huntington Beach side. So we call, and if it's in the street, they say we have to call Westminster. If it's on the sidewalk, it's Huntington Beach. But I don't understand it because Huntington Beach street sweeps it every week. So we have that problem, and back and forth of who has to, who's supposed to clean it. My wife's really get at it. She's on it, as soon as something gets dumped, they mean they'll dump it in the middle of the day, and she calls Huntington Beach, so she has it down with them. So we'll tell them, hey, it's on the sidewalk, it's not in the street, it's, you know, it's above the curb and on the concrete, so it has, it falls in their jurisdiction. So yes, on that dirt area, that would be really nice if they could put some sort of sprinklers and put some low vegetation in there, it would just stay, you know, healthy and decent looking, along with that wrought iron fence, which would be very nice to have over the chain link that's there now.
Thanks for your comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Bowie, we'll call the applicant up now for rebuttal.
Yes, I.
This is Mr. MacLeod.
Yes, please.
I'm in total alliance with the landlord, resident there, saying that people should take care of their property. Great point to make with the commission is to understand that DISH Wireless is a tenant on this SCE tower. DISH Wireless is not responsible for the condition of that existing property. The landlord, SCE, has an agreement with the nursery business on site, and they are responsible for maintaining and making the location look decent and clean. I'm not sure exactly where the dumping's occurring, as the neighbor had mentioned, but if there's a vacant spot and it's being dumped on SCE's property, that's an SCE question. That's not a DISH question. DISH Wireless is in this as a tenant, as an applicant, to attach their tenants on an existing utility tower. We've been conditioned to put a fence along an SCE property. DISH Wireless is putting a little feather in our cap here, is really going above and beyond the call of duty, really, to beautify this corridor by putting in this wrought iron fence, as you've come to agree upon. So just for the record, DISH Wireless is a tenant, we're not in control of the property. We are only leasing space on their tower and on the ground for our equipment. If there are any questions, we'd be glad to ask and answer them for you this time on that topic.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I would like to close the oral.
The public hearing.
Yes, and now we've come to the deliberation. With any motion, any adjustment of the CUP, please bring it up.
I will, I will agree with the way Don said it, so I think, I'm going to ask Don to make the motion.
Okay, well, I'll move then that we approve item 8.1, conditional use permit and development review application as recommended by staff with the following changes. One, that the landscaping, the 25-foot landscaping would not be required, and that in lieu of the suggested types of fencing, that a wrought iron fence and gate be installed along Hyle.
I second.
So Planning Commissioner Clerk, please record that change, and roll and call and vote, please.
Chair Bowie, just for a matter of record, let me please read the recommendation into the record, and I believe I got Commissioner Anderson's comment, I believe.
Yes.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, approving case number 2022-0278, conditional use permit and development review to allow the construction and operation of a wireless communication facility on an existing transmission tower with the Southern California Edison owned property located between Newland Street and Interstate 405 Freeway in the city of Westminster, California, 92683, APN 107-491-16. That was a motion by Commissioner Anderson and seconded by Vice Chair Hamadi. There are two modifications, that the landscaping is not required, and in lieu of the proposed fence, a wrought iron fence be installed. Okay.
Correct.
With that, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
And Chair Bowie?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0.
The action of the commission is final unless appealed by Thursday, October 5th.
Chair Bowie, now we can go down the rest of the remaining agenda.
Okay. So now we can go to the item number nine?
Nine, correct.
Regular business.
There is no regular business.
No regular business. Now go to item number 10, reports.
And there are no reports.
Okay. Now, item number 11, matter of response with staff.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie. I did want to let the commission know that I know for the, some of the past meetings we've had, we've provided you with some overviews of some important laws. I don't know if this is good news or bad news, but in Sacramento, on the governor's desk are about 30 planning related bills that we anticipate, from what I've been hearing, the governor will likely sign. Many of those bills, not surprisingly, are related to housing. So we will be coming back to you with a legislative update of these pending bills. The governor has up until October 14th to sign them. You'll get a sense of some of the ones that are probably the most impactful on Westminster and certainly every other community in the state. So that is, that's something we'll be bringing back to you. And finally, I just wanted to thank the staff for putting together tonight's meeting, and of course, I wanted to thank the commission, and thank you all very much.
Shall we move to item number 12?
Yes.
About the matters from Planning Commission, including the AB 1234. Do any commissioners have any announcement on that and would like to share with?
Yeah, I do, Chair Bowie. Just, this is a follow-up to the comment made by the property owner regarding the parkway in front of the Edison Eastman. And as the representative from DISH pointed out, they don't have responsibility for that, so I would like to ask Mr. Radke to follow up on that, and whichever, whatever channels you need to use, Steve, either yourself or somebody else could contact Edison and let them know of the problem and that they are responsible for the property. And if they wish to put that responsibility on the, onto the person or the company they lease the property to, that's fine, but that's not right for those homeowners to have to put up with that type of activity on that property.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have anything to share with us? Well, we move to item number 13, and I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:40, 7:38.
That's correct, 7:38.
The next meeting, regular meeting of Planning Commission, will be on Wednesday, October 4, 2023, at 6:30 PM. So thank you very much, and would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for a successful meeting today, especially our video recording team too.